If you could please take your seats, we're going to start up again. Adina Levin. Oh, I think she's outside. We'll just...
Adina Burrito.
Adina Levin? Would you like to come up next or finish your burrito? You're next. Or we can skip over you.
Skip over.
Okay.
Thank you very much. Good evening, council members. Adina Levin with Friends of Caltrain. And there's a lot of talk this evening about housing and the role, potential role of housing in addressing the regional housing crisis. But one of the things that I wanted to, what I wanted to talk about, I wasn't able to attend the last couple of meetings, but I did watch a fair amount of them on YouTube. And I wanted to address a few of the questions that came up regarding the relationship to housing and traffic and addressing some of the concerns relating to potentially having a mixed-use development. So the first question that, so one of the questions that was asked at one of the couple of previous meetings was, gee, if you do infill development and particularly housing, won't that increase traffic congestion? I mean, isn't that logical that you have more people, you're going to have some more cars, even if they are car light? Won't that increase congestion? Won't driving slow down? And so earlier today, I sent an email with some resources. There's some very good research that is out relatively recently showing that when there is infill development, including housing near jobs and services, yes, driving may in fact slow down. There may be more local traffic congestion. And so then the question arises, well, if you are adding housing near jobs, reducing vehicle miles traveled, people are driving less long, but that has a negative local impact. You're helping the region, but you're harming yourself. But what that research actually shows is that in areas that do the infill development, while people may drive slower, the amount of time they spend driving decreases because accessibility increases. You have more locations to get to within a short distance, and therefore you spend overall less time driving, even though that the time that you are driving may be slower. And there is some good research showing that in a variety of studies. And so feel free to take a look at the references in the email regarding that. Another thing that came up has to do with, well, how is it possible to create a car-light neighborhood? And I wanted to forward some things that the city of Mountain View has been working on for potentially adding up to about 10,000 units of housing near the offices in North Bay Shore where Google is. So they are, they have set a goal for .6 units of, so .6 parking spaces per housing unit. And in order to adapt to that, because there's so much commercial space and they're planning on adding more retail and services, they are planning on doing shared parking and therefore allowing some of the commercial parking that is, you know, nearly empty in the evening to be available for some of the residential parking to be able to handle that and also be able to, when having unbundled parking, to be able to have some flexibility. So that is something that they're doing. They have a goal of having a car-light area. They're really improving the transit. They're making the area super walkable. And then they're setting that goal for the low parking to help reduce the traffic. And then the last point I wanted to make is to step back and look at the bigger picture in terms of the relationship between housing and transportation. Enabling this development to be successful on the commercial side and any housing side is going to take a lot of transportation investment. And the Metropolitan Transportation Commission and ABAG have just approved the latest plan Bay Area and the action plan, which has a goal of addressing the things in that plan that were still going in the wrong direction in terms of mega-commutes and in terms of displacement. They had two new strategies. One was conditioning transportation funding on cities' production of housing, not just the little one Bay Area grant program that has been, had a number of conditions for the last few years, but potentially the larger pots of funding that are really needed for the types of infrastructure that would make this work. And then the other one is having policies to incent and the balancing of housing with transit-oriented jobs. So it's not clear exactly how those will play out and exactly how they will be implemented, but this is something that has been approved and therefore having the housing and the mixed use may turn out to be important and needed in order to make this work in any form. Thank you.
Thank you. Clara Johnson.
I think you should be at peace because I, you know, if you're going to be insulted, threatened, and intimidated, you should have your constituents do it. I'm trying to make you laugh.
I'm laughing.
The, I admire the spirit and the dedication of all the people who come from other communities because they're working for something that they really believe in. And what they don't evidently realize is that we believe in trying to treat people fairly as well, but we would like to exist as we have existed, at least in our character of our community. And you're going to build Parkside, which they may not know about, which does fulfill, I think, our fair share of the Bay Area's housing. You're going to have around 300 units there or close to it, and you're still looking for more projects. That will, I think, be something that makes sense for the community and also helps the region. So, thank you. My prepared remarks, I have given them to Ingrid. And I wanted to tell you that I watched your July 26 meeting yesterday and read the staff report today, and I appreciate the numerous questions that you ask. I have some comments and some questions, and I've organized them by subject because all that numbering that was repetitive was driving me crazy. Regulators and remediation. BCDC has jurisdiction over portions of the Baylands. The city should make contact with them and let them know where we are in the process and ask them for their comments because you asked that question somewhere and someone told you they hadn't talked to them in a long time. Well, why don't you give them, have the staff give them a call, you know, so you know the current, what they're thinking and what you're, you know, what you're thinking. Because to me, for somebody to say, well, 18 months ago, I knew what they wanted, well, check it out now to find out and tell them where we are. There are more than 80,000 known chemicals, and only a few hundred of them have been evaluated for their impact on human health. There are more chemicals on the Bayland than those listed in the monitoring report, and the actual health risk is greater than is acknowledged. The problem is that the regulation of toxic chemicals is sadly inadequate, and we can't, we can't change that at the moment. But I think we should all work to have it improved so there's a better understanding of what the risk is. The discussions you have had about the tremendous amount of soil placed on the site don't ever include the fact that that soil is required to separate the public from the contamination. And it must be approved by DTSC, Regional Water Quality Control Board, or as the staff report mentioned, Cal Recycle. The soil for OU1 and OU2 needs to be of a type and soil pore size that is appropriate to act as a barrier. And the soil they brought in is all, they don't know that, you know? They haven't done it that way. They've just been giving us fees and piling thousands of cubic yards on there, which they may have to remove in order to put the proper soil there. I think they, it's much more of a mess, I think, than they acknowledge to the city because they don't, they have not made a deal yet, as I understand it with DTSC at least, about that. It's not resolved. And they have to, they have to satisfy the regulators. So I think that should be mentioned when you're telling, because there's, you were talking about moving the soil as though there was no one else involved, and there definitely is. Also, before 2010, the soil was not adequately tested, and they've been, they've been ordered to test it all in lots of something like 1,000 cubic yards. There are plans that UPC has agreed to make sure that the regulator standards for that are met. I don't know the Cal Recycle requirements, but I think it would be similar. Recreation, all infrastructure. This is a question someone asked. All infrastructure is supposed to be paid for by the developer. Playing fields are infrastructure, so they should be, they're recreation infrastructure. They should be paid for by them. In an earlier Baylands presentation, Ms. Dangemont of Dangemont Landscape Architectural Firm said that she found a study indicated that there are, has been interaction between chemicals used to treat turf and the chemicals that were part of the contamination of the soil underlying that turf. So this issue should be investigated before you place playing fields anywhere on the Bayland. As long as you can get some information, make sure you're not creating a problem. Golden State lumber. Since the staff hasn't spoken to them in 18 months, it would be wise if they touch base with Golden State lumber. They can tell you what they're thinking, you can tell them where the project is. Water supply. During the EIR process, you use an attorney who specializes in water issues. Why not bring her back to review the current circumstances? She might provide more information regarding the probability of water being available for the project. The agreement made, the agreement to make an agreement for the OID water doesn't mean much unless there are agreements with MID and SFPUC, who have both said that there's enough information in the EIR to know whether they could accommodate our needs or not. If all the water available to use is pledged to others, then we're out of luck. It seems like an unreliable source of water. The pressure on water resources is increasing with population. The past is not a good predictor of future availability. Landfill. According to Dr. Lee, long-term post-closure municipal landfill failures after 20 years or more occur fairly frequently, leaving the host municipality to pay for repairs. We must be certain to protect against this possibility. Traffic, parking, greenhouse gas emissions, and transit. Where is the evidence that reducing parking well below the expected needs for developments actually reduced car usage and greenhouse gas emissions, and by how much? The report just lists cities that have done this. A former planning director told me once that it was kind of wishful thinking, that if you start looking at usage, car usage, people driving alone, those figures don't change that much. So if you're going to just, you take away the parking, make neighborhoods absolutely impossible to park, you ought to be sure that there's actually going to be a payoff. And I think there may be information available that could tell you that, you know, that how many, how many trips or they've taken a certain area. You could try to find it. The table on page 13 of your staff report indicates that after the project, the LOS will be 50 seconds at some and more than 50 seconds or 80 seconds at other intersections. Any number above 80 seconds, 10 minutes, 15 minutes, 12 minutes, is not a very helpful table. Noise. Item number 26, the noise metric should be expressed in DBA to link it to human hearing, and perhaps a CNL number should be given so you'd have an idea of the impact of the sound over the course of a day. The liability for this project should be assigned to the developer in any and all agreements signed by the city. It's not only sea level rise, but also chronic inundation that's a problem with sea level rise. The Union of Concerned Scientists has republi, published a report on areas that were inundated by flooding caused by sea level rise. And we should ask for a detailed copy of that report because it's difficult to read the map that the public can get on the internet. And I think we find that helpful. The San Mateo level report, the San Mateo sea level rise report is very, very conservative. It says 6.6 feet is the outside high number, not according to everyone else. That's an old figure. I'm almost done. And you can decide not to approve any project because you have an inadequate EIR. The renewable energy alternative without so much curbside space looks good for the town and the environment. Excuse me. Toxics must be monitored, and if they start to move, the owner has to do something about it, no matter what you do. They can't just sit there and let them start moving because that's when the regulators will move. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Clara.
Hi. My name's Victoria Fierce, and I live in Oakland. And I don't know how to explain to you that you should care about other people. Our disagreement is not merely political. It's a fundamental divide on what it means to live in a society. The Brisbane Baylands is a unique opportunity to take a stance against homelessness, and we need a grand vision of the future where homelessness is unheard of. And of course, we need strong leadership to take us there. A Bay Area for all of us requires us, absolutely requires us, to work towards environmentally sustainable housing for the entire community. It also requires that we do not privilege the concerns of the securely housed over those that are not. I am white, and I recognize the privilege that this gives me, but also let's interrogate what I'm up against. My rent is $2,000 a month. If I hustle, I can just barely afford it and still maybe have bus fare to get to the doctor for my medications. I live with my partner, not by choice, but by circumstance. We're both millennials, which means we've inherited an earth depleted of its resources and a great American society pillaged of its wealth by the generation before me. Cities are going bankrupt. Teachers have to have fundraisers to buy their students pencils, while the Air Force dumps billions of dollars of college tuition money on fighter jets that can't fly in the rain. Millionaires in luxury single-family homes on the Brisbane Hills enjoy their views and their exclusive neighborhood character, while kids in Fruitvale drink water that is more toxic than that in Flint, Michigan. I don't know how to tell you how you should care about other people. We again must not privilege the concerns of securely and comfortably housed over those that are not. I'm a millennial, as I said. You may have heard the news that my generation is killing avocado toast, fidget spinners, the private car, and yes, even casual sex. But you know what? Our housing shortage is killing more people than millennials ever will. Go ahead and call us entitled. We selfishly demand safe, affordable housing. We selfishly demand a seat at the table. We selfishly demand our right to the city. And we selfishly, shamelessly, without pause, demand that the city of Brisbane build more housing. There are of course consequences to denying housing. I'm an organizer. I connect people, and I give them the tools to solve their problems in their own communities. But I'm not just an organizer. I'm a YIMBY. YIMBYs get housing built, and YIMBYs show up. It doesn't depend on Brisbane whether or not we exist. We certainly exist. Whether you like it or not, history is on our side. We have momentum. We have a base. We get people elected. We move votes. We are YIMBYs. We are young. We are born from you. We will outlive you. We will bury you. Thank you.
On me.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Christina Fernandez, and I work for SAMCITA, or the San Mateo County Economic Development Association. SAMCITA represents a contingent of leading Bay Area businesses, institutions, organizations, and entrepreneurs. We are recognized for our experienced, impact-driven approach as a business advocacy organization. As companies seek to grow and expand in San Mateo County, there are two primary factors for choosing the right location on the peninsula. First, if housing is nearby or adjacent, and secondly, if public transportation is readily available. While there is a significant amount of housing under development in San Francisco near the Baylands, including Slade Lock, Candlestick, and Hunter's Point, it is not sufficient to meet the housing needs of the peninsula or the needs of growing companies looking for growth opportunity sites on the peninsula. With Caltrain already on-site and a site large enough to accommodate a wide range of uses, housing needs to be a part of the equation. World-class office space alone will not be nearly as attractive to future users as office space with adjacent housing. This is the reality of our new economy and an essential ingredient in our region's sustainability model, and it cannot be overstated. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Honorable Mayor, City Council, Karen Cunningham. It's really interesting to listen to all of this stuff, and if I were to recommend anything to you all tonight, I would say, you can't vote on this. What's really interesting to me is to hear, and I'm, you know, if I had my druthers, I would say, let's get a group together that is city council, that is residents, that is non-residents, that is renters, that is owners, that is building owners, that is the city council, that is the city staff, that is everybody, and try and figure out how to solve our regional housing crisis, which I certainly understand is a huge issue and is awful. You know, we have one, one police officer who lives here in town. We have none of our fire department who lives in town. We have a handful of our teachers who live in town, and you know, that's really sad to me, and I would love to resolve that. But Brisbane did not create the housing crisis that's in the Bay Area. That just blows my mind to continue to hear this. We did not create the housing crisis that is in the Bay Area, and we should not be the solution to the entire Bay Area housing crisis. I understand that, you know, our developers and, you know, the people from San Francisco want places to live, and I'm, I'm all for finding solutions. I really am. You guys know me, you know, I've got a big heart, you know? I find it really disheartening that, you know, the people who serve us cannot live here. I, it just, it's not good to me. But thanks to the senators and others outside of Brisbane for their comments on Brisbane. If Brisbane solved the collective Bay Area housing issues, we would still be way behind the requirements that they say is needed. San Francisco has 30,000 vacant apartment buildings, houses right now, that because of their own rules, and that the people who own these places don't have them out there for rent. Don't look at Brisbane and say, we now need to solve that problem. San Francisco needs to solve their problems before they start pointing their fingers at us. And I understand that there's a San Francisco Housing Coalition. Love you guys. I have a millennial son. I get all of that stuff. But you know, San Francisco's been building high-end luxury condos. San Francisco's been building all of these commercial buildings. Now they want to turn around and say, it's on you, Brisbane, to solve that issue. Even if we solve the issue, which they say is 10,000 housing units short, we're not going to come close, even if we built those 4,400 units. I'm not saying I'm for or against in the future of doing anything, but this is a joke. The stuff that I'm seeing come down the pipe right now, pointing fingers at us, the stuff that's going on with ABAG, everything that's going on around us, this is not realistic. It's totally not realistic. I just want to point out something that was in the news earlier today that I kind of found pretty interesting about San Francisco's management of their own issues. Wealthy San Francisco neighbors sue couple who bought their street. Hello? Hello? Did you guys read that? $14 per year, per person to pay for the upkeep of the street, but the city wasn't smart enough to send the bill to the right address. And they now want to turn around and point their fingers at us and say, Brisbane, you need to solve all of these problems. I think we need to be part of the solution, absolutely. I am so mad right now to be reading these things and to hear people sit here and point fingers at our city council, at the people of Brisbane, and say, you need to solve this problem. We did not create the problem. We did not build those big towers in San Francisco and those luxury condos that are now displacing the people who are sitting here right now demanding housing. And I wish I could provide it for them, but I think the argument is very flawed. Sorry, I'm a little upset about this. Thanks, I'm done.
Thank you.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor. Good evening, Honorable Mayor. Ah, sorry.
It's okay, take your time.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Councilmembers. My name is Michael Chen. I'm a resident of San Francisco. I'm going to try a different tack here, and I feel that the many arguments here are talking about change versus no change, of whether Brisbane should remain the same or should try something different. I would like to propose that Brisbane will change no matter what. We live in a Bay Area that is very attractive, very valuable for, not just for the jobs, but also for the Bay Area's natural beauty. We are facing great population growth and not enough homes for the people who want to live here. So I propose two possible futures where Brisbane builds the Baylands, one with no housing and one with housing. The one with no housing, I say, will mean that housing costs will be higher for Brisbane residents. It means that more people will be priced out. It means that children of residence here cannot afford to live close to their family members here. It means that the next generation will be well, less well-off than before. It means that teachers, police officers, social workers, firefighters cannot, can less, can less afford to live in Brisbane. It means a less, a more closed, less open, a more exclusive city where that denies opportunity to people. In the alternative with housing, I claim, more people will be able to stay in their homes. Extended families can live closer to each other. More dense, more people in the city means more pet shops, more Burmese restaurants, more boutique furniture stores that people can frequent, more great experiences on a main street. It means city, Brisbane can be a model for great transit-oriented development that is forward-thinking, that leads the Bay Area on to a better and more equitable future. I think the city council and many residents here treat the prospect of more housing, more residents with a lot of fear, and I would like to ask the council to treat it also with a lot of hope. Hope for more opportunity for people. Hope for, hope for a better future where we can reduce emissions because people can live closer to their jobs. I recognize that Brisbane cannot solve this, this housing crisis by itself. Brisbane did not cause it. It is a collective action problem. But I'm asking that we must fight for more housing, city by city, house by house, project by project, building by building. It is the reason why I advocate in my neighborhood in San Francisco, in the cities where I work, on the peninsula, in Palo Alto, and why I'm here in Brisbane, to ask for more housing. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, and everybody here tonight. Well, Clara covered a lot of what I was going to say. I was going to speak on the issue with the water, which is a big deal in itself. The cleanup, you know, we don't know what the toxics are. I mean, we do know what some are, but not what all of them are. So there is concern. You know, Brisbane was incorporated in 1961 because of the threat of being developed by Daly City on a large magnitude. And our founding fathers back then, you know, rallied the troops, and we incorporated and became a city for that reason. So I don't want to speak on the people that have been coming, the advocates for housing, but you know, I just learned a new term tonight was mansplaining by one of the advocates, and I believe that is YIMBY, you're in my backyard. That's YIMBY. That was a joke. So, you know, this, this, this is, this is... So, you know, this, this, this is, this is really a Brisbane issue. And, you know, back when most of us, I'm sure, bought homes in Brisbane, we were middle-class people and we could afford to buy a house. Myself and my wife couldn't afford to buy a house today in Brisbane. So I don't see how any housing in the Baylands is going to afford the opportunity for middle-class people to buy homes. You know, affordable housing doesn't mean that they're affordable to the middle class. So, you know, that's kind of, you know, it's a, it's an issue that really needs to be looked at, and I'm glad Tony Varios brought it up tonight. You know, we've all spent a lot of time on this Baylands issue. The EIR is not, it's inadequate for multiple reasons. And so, you know, we're, we're concerned community, and, you know, we have talked about addressing the issues for teachers and municipal workers, police, firefighters, and others that come into this community to give them affordable housing. You know, the Parkside Plan, they talked about industrial, doing mixed use. We have other issues out at Sierra Point where there could be condos put in. So, you know, we, you guys have come up with plans to meet our arena numbers. So it's not like Brisbane's not doing anything to address the housing issue. You know, there's no guarantees that certain portions of that Baylands is going to be developed if there's housing approved. There's no guarantee that the interchange into 101 is going to be built. You know, we have old infrastructure here. You know, we can't support the masses that are about to descend on Brisbane. You know, they're talking about moving the Cow Palace. You know, I talked years ago about having an entertainment center in the Baylands and doing a land swap for the Cow Palace out in, in the Baylands, so the Baylands could do a development that Daly City wants to do on the Cow Palace property on a grand scale. You know, so there's other projects right here in our county that are going to be coming down the pipe. So, you know, we want to do a regional, have a regional impact, and one of the biggest things that we could do as a community, as a region, and as the owners of the land, is to allow recology to expand. Because recology has to truck all their stuff, dozens of truck trips a day to Fairfield. And South City Scavenger, who doesn't have the capacity because they can't expand on their property to do exactly what they want to do at recology, they have to truck their stuff to Santa Rosa or Gilroy. So we're talking about having an impact on our carbon footprint, I think that would have the, the most beneficial impact. So I suggest that we go with the planning commission's recommendations, which were very well thought out by a lot of us in this community, including yourselves, that have an understanding of what's been brought to date. You know, a lot of people that are on the outside looking in don't understand the totality of what we're faced with in the Baylands. So I appreciate your time and thank you.
Thank you. Carolyn Parker.
Does this make us feel good? It says, no homes, no shop boycott Brisbane. I, I feel rather insulted. You know, we worked very hard here to keep Brisbane, Brisbane. We like to have a little town here, you know, we call it, we are a city, but we are a little town, we're unique. There's no other place like Brisbane until we get far away from here. I mean, this is it. And I think we should continue to keep the character of Brisbane. Where else are we going to find something like this? You know, Woodacre in Marin County, Princeton, Half Moon Bay, you know, where, where is another Brisbane? And, you know, to our credit, people have fought hard to keep Brisbane, Brisbane. And what are we going to do with the Baylands? I think the most important thing, as Paul said, is to expand recology. You know, if we expand recology, then we will be covering up the dump site. We will be helping Little Hollywood, they will not have the kind of pollution they're having now. And, and it will just increase the quality of life for San Francisco and the region. You know, it's, it's, that's important. I think too, if we're going to have high-speed rail come in, yeah, okay. You know, high-speed rail, we could, we have an opportunity to actually cap a dump site that's unregulated. They could come in, put a hardscape on it. And so if there's liquefaction or anything else that's going on, we could keep the bay cleaner. So, yeah, we could work with them, we could, we could work with them and ask them to help us cap the rest of the Baylands. I mean, the rest of the dump site, and the, and, and use it for entertainment. If you look at all the other unregulated dump sites, these are the dump sites from the turn of the century, 19th century, 20th century, to, you know, the 70s, early 70s, when they finally just stopped having cars come up and just dump whatever they want into the dump site, and they started regulating the dump sites. We don't know what's in them. There's no way to actually find out what's in these dump sites. The only thing we can actually do is to cap it. And we can't really, if you look at all the dump sites in the Bay Area, San Francisco Bay Area, none of them have been developed at all. They're all just, the only one that's ever been cleaned up is Mare Island. And what do they do when they cleaned it up? They put a fence around it. They put a fence around it because it was very contaminated with very, very bad toxins. You know, they, and now they have a little walking path in there. So that land, as far as I'm concerned, could never be sold, ever. I think what we need to do is kind of look at the, the picture besides just the housing. You know, what is actually good for this particular land? And, you know, how long has UPC had this land? They've, they've built, they've built some wells, they checked the toxins, you know, not to the sufficient degree that I, as a member of the BBC AGs, I never felt it was sufficient. You know, but they have never cleaned it up. And so now what they're saying is, let's build 4,460 homes on it, even though they knew when they bought it that they were going to build on Schlechlock area, and we had it in our general plan not to build housing. I agree with that plan. I still don't think we should build on area that is just contaminated. I, I don't think it's right for Brisbane, I don't think it's right for the whole community. I live in a condominium that has been built since in the last, it's 18 years old now, and we've had to completely rebuild it, it wasn't built well enough, and, and it's very expensive, the upkeep is terrible. Because, you know, it was built on fill, you know, part of it was a hill and part of it was filled up. So the parts that are, are settled, you know, the pile drive did and, and made it solid. But the pipes are exploding, they're actually bending and breaking constantly, and the upkeep is terrible. So if we're going to do that and call it low-cost housing, who's going to pay for the upkeep? You know, the people who are going to buy in? The way that the law is now, that the people who buy into the land as it's low-cost housing, they have no opportunity, none whatsoever, to build equity. And when they buy, they're still going to be part of the condo association, and they're going to have to pay for whatever upkeep there is. So they're, they have low costs, you know, they don't have much money, but yet they're going to build, buy into condos, and those condos are going to need constant upkeep. There's no doubt about it. Because it's going to be built on fill, and it's going to be high rises, and it's just going to need lots of attention. So I don't think this is the right place to put our low-cost citizens. I think a better place would be right downtown, and we should be realistic about it. You know, there's, there's other places maybe that we could put low-cost housing. Let's not put it in the Baylands. Let's, let's do something that works for the Baylands. Let's put, you know, let's, let's look at it as a transportation hub, a place to put transportation vehicles. I think this is a better solution. I, I, I do want us to, and I'm sure my time's up, but I want to think about the whole picture of the whole Baylands. And I actually stand by the work that we did at the planning commission. I think we really studied and read through thousands and thousands of pages of documents. We all did separate projects to try to understand what's going on, and I think we did a good job. So thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, all doing. Corey Smith, I am speaking on behalf of myself tonight, because you already heard from a couple of my colleagues. You know, one of the things I always really kind of struggle with when I talk to people is, you kind of have two different ways to go about it. You can either address things that people are talking about, or come up and talk about the things that drove me here today and why I wanted to do this. So just, I had to address a couple because I was somewhat pulling my hair. Number one, 75% of the proposed homes are going to go within a quarter mile of the Bay Shore Caltrain Station, that's over two miles from here. Senator Scott Wiener posted something on his Facebook, and somebody commented about redeveloping Brisbane, and he, perhaps more poetically than I ever could, pointed out that we're not talking about touching anything in downtown Brisbane at all. We're, we're talking about the Baylands, which is a couple of miles away, and I really, really do think that's an important distinction, because the small-town feel is really cool. And throwing 4,000 homes in your downtown urban core would change things dramatically, but I would argue it's a little less traumatic considering the distance that it is away. It is quite literally closer to San Francisco than downtown Brisbane. And I don't care who develops the land. The annexation conversation blew up really quickly. The county of San Mateo has talked about doing things. Donald Duck could build here, I would not care. It, it's about homes, and it's about creating shelter for people, that is the point. And so however that works out, I, I just hope that there's a solution that gets everybody on the same page. Which ties to another thing. Nobody is accusing Brisbane of being the bad guy in this situation. The main reason, if we were to point to one specific thing, I would probably go with Prop 13, passed by the voters in the late 70s, that set up an inequitable tax structure that incentivizes cities around the state of California to build office and commercial instead of housing. That is the probably one single thing that led us to this issue more than anybody else, and it happened 10 years before I was born. And looking around at the other people that, yeah, I came here with from San Francisco today, most of us weren't around at that point. So the solution doesn't exist in just Brisbane either, and we know that. We are the people that are going to the community meetings in San Francisco, trying to get them to upzone massive swaths of the city. Again, one of the reasons that we are in this mess is because we decided to push everything down and to limit the number of people that can move here and live here, and look at where it got us. This isn't a shock, it totally makes sense. Any reasonable person with a basic understanding of supply and demand can see it and go, yeah, duh, but let's figure it out, and let's try to do something going forward where the city of Brisbane can be happy and is a good regional partner, so we don't have to go through the drag-down, knock-it-out fight all the time. Okay, that was in reaction to everybody else. The reason that I did want to come up here and talk, that was really on the environmental issues, and it got brought up earlier, that 37% of the state's CO2 emissions came from transportation. I've been spending way too much time in white papers on this stuff lately. Of that 37%, 90% of it comes from on-road transportation, so it excludes like air and airplanes, right? Or rail and airplanes, rather. And then of that 90%, 37% come from individual car use. So if you take the state's CO2 emissions, 37% of that is a certain percentage, 90% of that 37, and then 79 of that 90, leads you to 26.5% of the state's total CO2 emissions come from cars. A London-based environmental organization called BioRegional found that the most environmentally-friendly thing to do on the Baylands would be building 10,000 units, more than double what is being proposed. If we're talking from an environmental perspective, that is the most environmentally-friendly thing to do. And there's different opinions, and there's different stakeholders, that's fine, but we can't ignore those facts. Cars not only are killing our planet, they're slowly killing our people. I ran across a stat today, the American Lung Association estimates that the state of California spends $15 billion every single year in health treatment related to CO2 emissions from cars. $15 billion a year because we don't build jobs, housing, and transit next to each other. That is insane. Do you know how much we can do with that money? There's a lot at stake here, and I get that, and I, and I am certainly aware of the position that you're in, in trying to get all of these conflicting opinions and voices, and yeah, oftentimes screams and harassment that are coming at you from friendly folks and not-so-friendly folks, it, it's chaotic, but at its core, this really, really is an environmental issue. And if you claim to be pro-environment, you have to be pro-housing. There, there's no question about that. Pro-environment and pro-housing, and pro-housing next to jobs and transit, which is exactly what the Baylands is, is the way to go forward. And if you claim to be pro-environment, but you don't support housing, quite frankly, you are full of shit. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, earlier I called Daniel Rosiski, is he here? All right. So I have no more slips, is there anyone else who'd like to speak?
Robert Howard, 18-year Brisbane resident. The Brisbane Baylands is a very difficult site, and there's all sorts of interesting problems out there. It's been, part of it's been a dump for at least 100 years, started off, in fact, the rail yard side started off as a dump for materials removed from San Francisco, starting around the time of the Great Earthquake. And then we ended up with the unregulated dump on the east side, and there's all sorts of materials in there that we don't know about, because no records are kept. There's been various surveys done on that area. It's, my, from what I've, you know, find out, is that on the east side, it's 100 feet, oh, sorry, 200 feet down through the bay mud to bedrock. It's constantly wet under there, it's also got a tidal flow, so the water level goes up and down, which has a very interesting effect. Several years back, Ronald Lorland of the USGS gave a very interesting talk about an arc bacteria that lives out there, and it metabolism is based on arsenic. And its behavior changes depending on how wet it is out there. And so through the day, it cycles, and its metabolism changes, and part of the day is outputting a gaseous salt of arsenic. There's not much you can do about it because it pulls it out, the arsenic out of the water. So that's one of the problems out there. There's also all sorts of other toxins there, inorganic, inorganic toxins out there, some are not known, we don't know what their interactions are. I would not want children living out there, let alone adults, because of this. Talking about CO2 problems, you're going to have a lot expenses from CO2 problems, you're going to have a lot of expenses from illnesses caused by that. From what has been proposed so far in the, when I looked in the EIR, was that the area was not going to be fully remediated, it was going to be capped. So the problem is caps get pierced over time. Down in Mountain View, there's a problem with one of the Google buildings that was built on, on top of waste dump there, where it got inundated with the toxins off the waste dump, and they had to evacuate the building after people got sick. There's also been talk about Caltrain moving, once it gets, gets further along its electrification program, wanting to move out of San, the rail yard out of San Francisco and possibly into the Brisbane Baylands. And as part of their plan for speeding up the throughput of trains, which would actually help reduce CO2 consumption because it would give people more ability to take public transport up and down. up and down the peninsula. For the housing activists, they should be going to places like Atherton, Mountain View, Menlo Park, Palo Alto, et cetera, down the peninsula, where they either don't allow housing, but allow a lot of office spaces to be built, more and more and more. The alternative plan that was proposed by the Planning Commission seems to alleviate a lot of the problems with transportation miles by, because if you build housing, people don't necessarily want to work and live where they are. They keep talking about housing for people who are working somewhere else. So that's not going to reduce your transportation miles. Also, I had heard there was also, I'd been in the past, a memorandum of understanding with San Francisco that housing was going to be built across the border from Brisbane and San Francisco and that businesses were going to be supplied on the Brisbane side. I don't know if that's true or not, but that's what I heard. The other big problem down there is the tank farm. Tank farm's not going to go away anytime soon, if ever. There's constant plumes coming off of that, both in the air and the ground, and that blows over the Baylands. Also, what about the water allocation? There was a representative of one of the water districts saying that there wasn't, one of the meetings sometime back, saying there wasn't any allocation of water available. Recently it's come to light that in California, the groundwater storage situation is worse than people thought. So it turns out California has been giving permission to dump oil well wastewater in the incorrect, in the wrong aquifers. So they were being dumped in sweetwater aquifers and contaminating the groundwater. And that's it.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak who hasn't spoken? Thank you all for your public comment. Appreciate everyone's patience and input. Is there anything else from the council on this matter before we move on? Okay. So we'll move on to Mayor Council Matters. Item A, City Council Schedule Concerning the Baylands Deliberations.
Do you know when you're going to vote?
I'm not voting tonight.
No, I know you're not voting tonight, but do you have any intention of putting a timeline on that?
I think we're going to talk about that right now.
That's the next item on the calendar, on the agenda. So would staff like to speak to that?
Yeah, as we stated earlier in the evening, we'll get back to you as soon as we have more information from our lobbyists in Sacramento in terms of what's happening, in terms of both timing and substance. And we'll report back as soon as we have information and report back.
So the calendar has the dates of August 17th and 31st, so those then will come off the calendar? Or will they stay on?
I would just maybe leave them in your personal placeholder, but not, we won't be scheduling those at this time, particularly the 17th, because the legislature doesn't go back into session until the 21st. So I think it's safe to say the 17th would not be a night, although you do have a closed session item on another item that night, just as a reminder. But the 31st, I think we'll just kind of put it on hold for right now.
And when does the legislative session end?
Sometime in September.
September, okay.
So, sorry, which piece of legislation are you articulating that's relevant to you?
Do you want to come up to the microphone? If you want to ask a question?
Yeah, I'm just, so I would agree, there's a lot of statewide housing legislation that's up right now, but I'm not sure any of it actually has much relevancy to the Baylands. And so I'm curious, what is the argument of which of the housing bills that are making the, there's about 130, I know most of them. What are the ones that you're saying have any relevancy to the Baylands?
If I may, through the council, I don't think we should really be talking about this.
Yeah, I'll leave, I think our city attorney.
But if you have no justification for this delay, then.
We can delay something for any reason.
I know that a council member actually had come up and asked a question, but we're done with the public process right now in regards to coming to the podium, and so.
But it seems like you're just extending the public process for more and more and more in order to continue to delay and delay and delay a decision. This seems like another effort to not make a decision here tonight.
Okay, thank you for your opinion.
City Attorney?
I think the mayor indicated at the start of the meeting that the council was going to take this, not take any action tonight and wait for the legislative process to continue. And once the staff has information from our lobbyists about what that legislation looks like and analyze it, then we will bring back to the council and schedule further deliberations.
Okay, so moving on to, next item is written communications. I'd like to acknowledge receipt of written communications regarding the Brisbane Baylands project. Between July 24th and August 7th, we received written correspondence from the following people. Adrian Roy, Ryan Jones, Manuel Apollonio, Garrett Coatsy, Bradley Dunn, David Hildebrand, Brian Davis, Lawrence Chung, Isabella Chu, Martha Eckdahl, Sarah Brano, Yvonne Lee Healy, Ewan Coe, Tay Feeder, Evan Kogener, Barbara Newhauser, Brent Camrath, Nelson Borja, Shannon Hamilton, Jason Share, Shire, Cliff Moon, Rob Hornick, Eric Ananson, Nathan Howard, Jason Cummings, Peter Collagen, Kevin Riggle, Gregory Lemieux, Michael Ducker, Dan Finkel Sirma, Watson Ladd, and Sarah Bland. And with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you.